Thank you, Justin.
Got it.
Brilliant. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, welcome, welcome to today's Sunday study session.
Thank you.
Good to have you all. Good to have you all. Good to see some returning faces. Good to see some new faces. I don't think I've ever seen Little Man's face before. Do we have anyone here who is new, is the first time doing a Sunday study session? Any first timers here today? No? Okay. Alright, cool. I know we've got at least one person who is a second time. Have you got any other second timers? I've an sister, Constance. Are you guys all seasoned veterans, yeah?
I'm a second timer.
Got another second timer, okay. Fantastic. Cassandra, yeah? Take Cassandra. Okay, welcome back. Who's a seasoned vet? Who's been to all the Sunday studies, except for Justin? You know, who's been to like loads of Sunday study sessions? I know, I don't know who has.
I've been to a few.
Yeah? Okay, oh, hello, hey, thank you. Yes, yeah, good to see you. Regular gang, come on. Brilliant. Anyone else? Any of my other regulars here?
I've been to myself.
Judith, that's been to a couple, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been to a few as well.
Yes, lovely. Okay, good, nice. Well, welcome back, guys. I'm grateful for you all. I'm grateful for everyone who comes to these sessions. I personally, personally appreciate you all. So, let me explain what these sessions are, because obviously some people might be watching this recording for the first time. So, I'm gonna explain what these sessions are about. I'm gonna explain what I'm hoping to kind of get from these sessions, what my intention is, who I am, do you know what I'm saying, and what I'm doing. So, my name is Nate, as you can see at the bottom. Hopefully it's about there, I'm not sure. I'm a poet. I'm a poet. I run events. I do loads of things. I've been self-employed since 2020. This is my own clothing brand, see it, Liver Clothing. Yeah, Nate the lyricist of Liver Clothing, do you know what I'm saying? It's my own clothing. I run events. I do music. I do poetry. I get paid to perform poetry. However, the lockdown hit me hard, right? Because obviously during lockdown, I'm not doing any events. Yeah, I'm not outperforming. I'm not making money. I'm not hosting my own events. I'm not making money. I can't, I can't do those things, right? So, give thanks to Justin for putting me into this space, because I've learned another stream of income, another way that I can make money. You know, to kind of help supplement my income, which I'm grateful for. Sometimes it helps pull me through. Sometimes it sucks my money. Do you know what I mean? It is like, and I was like, ah, what have I done? But at the same time, I've learned a new skill. My thing is I absolutely love to learn. I really love to learn. Learning is one of my big, like, four things that I love more than anything, do you know what I mean? I love to learn, yeah? Whatever it is that I'm studying, if I'm studying sales, I'm studying sales. If I'm studying astrology, I'm studying it. I wanna know. I wanna break it down. I wanna understand every bit of it, do you know what I mean? To help me to really grasp it. The way that I see it is if I can't explain it to a child, then I don't understand it. Yeah, I need to be able to explain it to a child. So, we actually have a young person on the call today. So, I'll tell you at the end of the call, little bro, will you let me know if you've understood everything, yeah? I wanna know, because you're on the call for a reason. You're there to help us, do you know what I mean? So, if you understand, then everyone should understand.
He's like, he thinks he means nothing.
Yeah, dude, yes, I do.
So, he's gonna teach so that you can understand it and learn it too. It's actually my plan. I'm like, by the time I figure it out, then he'll be set for later, like, he'll learn it too.
Lovely. That is the intention for today. Okay. So, today, the subject I wanna speak about is actually patience. I wanna speak about patience. But I wanna speak about patience in the context of candlesticks. So, we're gonna break down what each candlestick means, and what each candlestick teaches us. And we're gonna speak about it in the context of patience. So, again, I joined this company in September last year. And at first, I really struggled. I hit a lot of potholes. I hit a lot of speed bumps. I hit a lot of, you know, and I'm still struggling, still struggle, yeah? It's not, and trading is not easy. Investing is not easy. It's very simple, but it's not easy. It's something that you really have to practice. It's something you really have to learn. You have to stay on top of your study. You have to be consistent when you study it, right? Because it's not easy. There are millions and millions, trillions of pounds in this market. Okay, so you have to respect the market. It's not something that anyone can just walk up and just pick up their scoop it out and look at me, I'm a millionaire. You know, it's not that simple, yeah? So, you really do have to study. You really do have to be patient. You really do have to take your time and respect the market and give it focus, okay? In order for you to really reap the benefits of what's going on. I started off studying the WOW videos, but the WOW videos at first, they didn't really do it for me. Until I had a training session with Carl. And Carl, Carl's training session was really helpful for me. It helped me so much. You know, it helped me to really understand. I think because Carl was like, to me, he felt like a peer. Do you know what I'm saying? He felt like someone that was kind of on my wave, on my level. He wasn't like a multimillion pound trader who was just like, you know, using all these long complicated words. He was one of us. He was like, this is what I do, and that's what I do, and this is how it works. And for me, I thought it was so helpful to me. The only thing that I felt was missing was the consistency. So, the purpose of these Sunday study sessions is for me to help new starters every week to get that same head start that Carl gave me. And then once you get that head start, I always encourage people to go to the videos on WOW. Because the videos on WOW and Mine Harbour, you know, that is where you're gonna get the meat on the bones, yeah? This is the, this is the seasoning. This is the recipe. This is where you're gonna learn the foundation. This is where we're gonna talk about what is a pip. That's it. This is where we're gonna talk about what is a candlestick. That's it, yeah? But if you wanna learn trading strategies and you wanna learn how to use market structure, you know, to your, to your advantage, then I would strongly, strongly recommend that you go and look at the videos on WOW. You go and look at the videos on Shift. That is what you guys are paying for, okay? No one's paying me to do this. This is me being like, okay, Carl helped me to stop losing money. And I wanna help you guys to stop losing money, so that the people, that the customers that Justin brings in, for example, can stay instead of coming in, losing your money and going. It's not that bad. Like, this is a good place to be. Come and learn, do you know what I'm saying? Come and learn. Come and actually put in the work. And you will see results, yeah? And what I wanna do is help people get a bit more of a head start, so that people can come and stay focused, and do you know what I mean? So, on that note, we're talking about patience. Because, like I said, it's not something that you can kind of just step into the market and all of a sudden you're a millionaire. Even though the market does have that potential, even though the market does have that potential, it's not realistic that that's going to happen for everybody, yeah? If that happens for you, then, you know, you've struck gold, you've hit the lottery. It does get like that sometimes. Well done, yeah? If you take one trade on Shift and you over-leverage that trade, and all of a sudden you've gone from a hundred pounds to ten thousand pounds, you're laughing, right? But that's not gonna happen all the time. That's not gonna always be the case, okay? So, for the most part, for the most part, the best way to grow your account when you're investing, investment in itself is a long game. Yeah, it's not a short game. Investment is something you do for the long term, okay? So, this is why I always say to people, it's a good way to make money, but it's more so, investment is what you do with your money. Okay, when you earn money, you can either save that money in a bank or you can invest that money in something, right? So, what does investment mean? Well, investment essentially means that you put money into something because you believe that the value of that thing is going to grow. So, let's say you started your own business, right, selling cakes. And I give you one pound. I invest one pound in your business. That's not gonna help your business much. But if I invest a thousand pounds or a million pounds, or if loads of us invest a hundred pounds each in your business, then the value of your business is going to increase because you've now received investments, yeah? And as the value of your business increases, the value of my investment increases and my return on investment increases, right? So, if I give you, if I invest a hundred pounds in your business and your business does really well, and your business is now worth a million pounds, then my one hundred pound investment is now going to be worth more, yeah? Because the amount that I've given you has, has now increased in value. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I thought we lost you for a minute.
That is what an investment is, okay? You can invest in a lot of different things. You can invest in companies, as we said. You can invest in commodities like oil, like the value of oil. Is oil gonna get more expensive or is oil gonna get less expensive? Gold, silver. You can invest in crypto coins, which are decentralized, which are really good, because that means the bank can't, you know, manipulate them. That said, you know, Elon Musk just sends a tweet and the same thing happens, you know? You can invest in currencies, which is what we're gonna speak about today. Because that's what we're here doing, yeah? Us in the foreign exchange market, what we're doing is we're investing in currencies. So, if, for example, you invest in the value of the pound, because you believe that the pound is going to become more valuable, right? Then if you invest, say, ten pounds in the value of the pound, and the value of that pound becomes more, then your ten pounds will turn into twenty, will turn into thirty, will turn into forty, because obviously you've invested in the pound. And you are one of the people that helped to strengthen that, that, that economy, right? Okay, so that's what we're looking at today. But as I said, the subject is patience, right? There were two, I mean, there's one kind of patience, but there's two ways we're gonna look at patience today. We're gonna look at patience in trading, and we're gonna look at patience in your journey in general, okay? So, those are the two different kinds of patience we're gonna look at. First, we'll do patience in trading. And in order to understand that, I'm gonna need you guys to understand how the candlesticks work. So, I'm gonna share my screen, and I'm gonna show you. Okay? All right. Okay, so seeing as we have no first timers at all, I'm gonna guess that the majority of you guys know what we're looking at here. But I might ask, yeah, just to kind of gauge the room, just so that if, if there's anyone who's unsure, maybe you guys can tell us, yeah? So, for example, can someone tell me, can one of you brave souls tell me, what is this little number called?
A pipette.
A pipette. Excellent. What about this next number?
A pip.
A pip. Fantastic. And what is a pip? In one sentence, what is a pip?
The unit of measurement.
Come on, Justin. Come on, Justin. I was wondering who was gonna drop that. That's my favorite sentence, yeah? Guys, a pip is a unit of measurement. Okay, so if you were to drink water, you would say, I have drunk two litres of water today, yeah? If you were to, you go for a jog or go for a walk, you would say, I've walked for two miles today, yeah? If the market moves, then we will say the market has moved one hundred pips today. Okay, so what that means is, if the market goes from one point three eight three zero to one point three eight four zero, the market has moved forty pips, yeah? The market has moved forty pips. That's what the market's done. So, a pip is ultimately a unit of measurement, okay? And it's measuring how far the market has moved. I'm gonna just zoom into that. We're actually gonna open the chart now. Yeah, one of them actually lovely. In fact, let's go for the hour. Okay, so, so, for example, if you look at these numbers on the right-hand side in the black box, see the black box on the right-hand side? It's following these crosshairs, yeah? So, if we say, look at this candle, this black candle here, and we start at the top of the candle, because this black candle, we know price has gone down. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come into that in a second. But we can see that this has gone from one point three eight six nine seven down to one point three eight five five two. So, we can count, if you can be bothered to do the math, then we can count how many pips the market has moved during this one candlestick. Because a pip is a unit of measurement. Okay, so because a pip is a unit of measurement, we can count that the market has moved from one point three eight six nine seven down to one point three eight five four five. And we can count how many pips that is. We can one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, if you can be bothered to do the math, yeah? You can actually count how many pips the market has moved during this one candlestick. So, what is a candlestick? Well, a candlestick, as you can see, is basically a, it's like a block that marks how many pips the market has moved during any given session. So, what is a session? Lot of questions today, isn't it? Come on. What is a session? Well, if you look here, you can see the way this market is divided is into different timeframes. Okay, so you've got MN, which stands for month. And on the, on the monthly chart, each one of these candlesticks represents one month. Then you've got W1, which is week. On the weekly chart, each one of these candlesticks represents one week. Then you've got D1, one day. On the daily chart, each one of these candlesticks represents one day, four hours, one hour, thirty minutes, fifteen minutes, five minutes, and one minute. Okay, so during, during each one of these candlesticks, one hour had to pass in order for this candlestick to form. So, let me just show you what that looks like again, okay? So, bear in mind, we are looking at the chart for GBP USD, okay? That's not gonna change. We're gonna stay looking at this chart. What I am gonna change is the timeframe. So, let's start off with the month. So, in this instance, every single candlestick represents one month, okay? Because I've pressed the MN button. If you look on the top left of the screen, you see it says GBP USD comma MN. Yeah, so we're looking at the monthly chart. So, every single one of these candles represents one month. So, I want you to take a notice of what's happening here, okay? So, we're going from the bottom, which is one point one four, all the way up to the top here, which is one point four two. One point one four to one point four two, yeah? So, that's like three thousand pips, I think, yeah? One point one four, one point one four to one point four four would be three thousand. So, one point four two is that, what, two thousand eight hundred pips or whatever, yeah? That's that move, going from the bottom up to the top. How many months did it take for that to happen? Well, we could say one month, two months, three months, four months, five months, six months, seven months, eight months, nine months, ten months, eleven, twelve months. A year. Took one year for it to go from down here all the way up here. That took a whole year, guys. That took a whole year, okay? And this is what I mean when I say patience is necessary, because obviously if you're trying to wait for something to happen, it's not gonna happen immediately. Sometimes, some of these moves can take years to happen, yeah? Especially if you're trading on the monthly chart. Okay, but we'll come back to that. I want you guys to look at the pattern of this chart, okay? So, you can see that it's, it's gone from the bottom up to the top. And then if you look at this section at the top here, we can see we've got a little spike here. Then we've come down. Then we've got two big candles. Then we've come back down. Yeah, a little spike here, this white one with a wick, little spike here, come back down. Then we've got these two big candles, then we come back down, okay? So, we've gone from the bottom. We've climbed up. We've got a little poke here. Then we've dropped down. Then we've gone back up, spike, back down, two candles, and then down. Is everyone able to see that? You guys, you guys see what I'm talking about? Because I haven't broken down the five pieces each candle gives yet. So, is anyone not understanding this? Lovely, lovely.
Sorry, Nate. The candles are two colors. The, the black, the dark one and then the other, and
Yeah.
The lighter one. So, what's the difference?
Okay, good question. Good question. So, each, each candlestick gives us five pieces of information, okay? The first is the direction, is the color. So, sometimes you might see candlesticks that are red and green. Sometimes you might see them that are black and white. Those are the two standard colors, but the candlesticks come in other colors as well. Okay, you can choose whatever color you want, but the standard is either red and green or black and white. Okay, so ultimately, all this is telling us, if I just zoom out a little bit, you can see that price, price is going from, what's this number on the right? One point four. It goes up to two point one. It goes down to one point two. Price is going up, down, up, down, up, down, up, down, up, down at any given time, yeah? When price goes up, that is, that is a white candle. When price goes down, that is a black candle. Okay, so you can see here, for example, price is going up. These are white candles. And in this black candle here, price has gone down a tiny little bit. Then it's gone up, yeah? But price is ultimately going up over here. White candles mean price is going up. Black candles are when price is going down, as you can see. Look. Price has gone down. Price has gone down, 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 down. Price has gone up, 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 up. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, so one piece of information that each candlestick tells us is whether during that session, price has gone up or down. So, remember, in this context, a session is a month, okay? So, during this month, price went down. During this month, price went up. Yeah, simple enough?
You're saying during this month, price went down. During this month, price went up. So, that is confusing now.
Okay, hold on. Let me, let me actually use my pen to explain what, to say that again. During, during this month, while this candlestick was being formed, price went down. During this month, while this candlestick was being formed, price went up. Yeah, you can see, hopefully, that price has gone down, and then price has come up, and it's gone down again, and it's come up again. Can you see that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I can see them.
Yeah, so black candles mean that price is going down, and white candles mean that price is going up.
Okay.
Yeah, so even when you look at this hair, which has got loads of black and white candles, I'm gonna zoom in on it a little piece, just so you can really see what we're looking at. Hair, if black means price has gone down or white means price has gone up, this candle, this black candle means price has gone down.
Yeah.
That's what that means. Price has gone down. So, price went down, then it went up, then it went down, then it's gone up, then it's gone down, then it's gone up, then it's gone down, then it's gone up, then it's gone down, then it's gone up. Can you see that? Down, up, down, yeah? That's what we're looking at. A white candle means that price has gone up. A black candle means that price has gone down during that session, yeah? So, during this month, this one month here, during that month, price went down. That's why the candle is black. Whereas during this month, price went up. That is why this candle is white. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, simple, clear, yeah? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yes, very clear.
Lovely. Okay, brilliant. Okay, fantastic. All right. So, because we know that price has gone up or down on the respective candle, that tells us two additional pieces of information. Let's take this black candle on the far right-hand side, for example, okay? So, if we know that price went down, if we know that price went down, someone tell me, did price start at the bottom or did it start at the top? If it's gone downwards, then has it started here and gone down to here? Or has it started here and, well, it can't, because if it started there, it would have had to go up, right? While the candle was being formed, it would have had to go up. Starts at the bottom, that means it's gone up. If it starts at the top, then it goes down, yeah? While the candle is being formed. So, let me, let me draw a candle, okay? If I draw a candle, if I start here and I go down and I finish here, is this candle white or black?
Is black.
Black.
Excellent. Okay, if I start here and then I draw the candle and I finish here, is this candle white or black?
It's white.
It's white, exactly, right? So, that also tells us where the candle started and where the candle finished. Yeah, it tells us two additional pieces of information. So, I can see this white candle here, it's gone up, which means it started at the bottom and it finished at the top. I can see this black candle, it's gone down, which means it started at the top and it finished at the bottom. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, is that clear? Does anyone not understand that yet still? Lovely. I love my job. Do you know what? I love this, you know? I'm so glad. I'm so glad. I'm so glad. Okay, brilliant. Okay, cool. So, while a candlestick is being formed, remember, it's gonna take all month for that candlestick to form, yeah? All month. It's not something that happens overnight. It takes time for it to form. So, let's say the candlestick starts here and it goes up and it finishes there, yeah? That is a white candlestick. However, let's say during the course of the month, it changes its mind and it actually goes down and finishes there. What it will do is it will leave a wick to say, I was here. I did come this high. I did come this high, but I changed my mind. Yeah, it will leave a wick. So, let me just try that again, because where the candle starts is never gonna change. It starts here, it's gone down, it's a black candle. If it starts here and goes up, it's a white candle. But where it starts will never change, yeah? It will always start in the same place, right? So, if it starts here and it goes down, and then during the course of the month, price changes its mind and something drives that price up. Now, it's gone up, but it will leave a wick to say, oh, I did go this low. Okay, so we can look at each candlestick, and we can see, this one, for example, has got a wick at the top and a wick at the bottom. Can I zoom in any more than this? I can. Nice one. Has got a wick at the top and a wick at the bottom, okay? So, it's a black candle. So, someone tell me, which part of the candle body did it start at? The top or the bottom?
The, the top. The top.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so we know price started at the top, and we know price finished at the bottom. That's why it's a black candle. Yeah, it started at the top and it finished at the bottom. That's why it's a black candle. So, we can see it started at this price and it finished at that price, yeah? That's what happened during the course of that month. During that month, the value of the pound-dollar started at that price and finished at that price, okay? But what else happened? Something else happened during this same month, okay? So, we started here, then we can see we went all the way up here to the top of the wick. So, at first, this was a white candle. And then it changed its mind, and it's gone all the way down here to the bottom, and it was a big black candle with a long wick. And then it's pulled back even more. So, now it's got a wick at the bottom and a wick at the top. And it's, and it's still a black candle, because obviously it starts at the top and finishes at the bottom. But we can see where it started, where it finished, how high it went, and how low it went. We can see all five pieces, oh, in which direction it went, yeah? We can see all five pieces of information expressed clearly in that one candlestick. Yeah, is there anyone that doesn't understand that? Is there anyone that that's not clear to? We can spend more time on this. Say again?
None of us perfect, perfect explanation.
Lovely, 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 lovely. Okay, fantastic. Okay, brilliant. All right then. So, we know what the five pieces of information that each candlestick tells us are, is, are, are. We know what they are, yeah? So, how do we use that information? Well, as I said, each candlestick represents a timeframe. It represents a session, okay? So, as we, as, as we are right now, we're looking at the monthly candlesticks, okay? So, we can see that it took a month for each one of these candlesticks to form. If we go to current, present day, this candlestick is currently being formed, this one on the far right-hand side. This is what's happening right now. This is current price in the blue, yeah? And this candlestick is currently being formed. So, what has happened this month? What is it? What, we're in September? All I know is we're in Virgo season. I didn't even know. All I know is we're in Virgo season, I don't even know what month it is. When's September, yeah?
September, September.
Yeah, okay, so, um, so this is a white candle, okay? Um, so what does that mean? That means that price started at the bottom and has gone up to, this is where we are right now. However, we can see by the wick that we have actually gone this high, and then we started to come back down to here. Yeah, we started at the bottom, maybe we've gone down a tiny little bit, then we've gone all the way up to the top, and now we're pulling back, and this is where we currently are. Yeah, this is current, this is current price. Does that make sense to everyone? Can everyone see what's happening with this candle?
Yeah.
Yeah? Now, obviously, it's the weekend, which is why the candle is not moving. You know, um, if it were a weekday, then the candle would be moving up, down, up, down, up, down, just a tiny little bit, and you would see the candle being formed, okay? But because it's a weekend, we can't see the candle moving. That's fine, because you guys can see how it would move if it were moving, yeah? You can see that price, it can only go up or down, that's all it can do. It can't go left, it can't go right. While this candlestick is being formed, it's gonna go up, it's gonna go down, that's what it's gonna do. Okay, um, so we're looking at the monthly chart. Let's, oh, sorry, stop animation. We're looking at the monthly chart. Now I wanna run back what I showed you again. Okay, now that you guys understand what we're looking at a little bit clearer, and thank you for your question, by the way, whoever it was, I didn't see who, um, because I could only see my screen, so I didn't see who it was that asked me the question about what are the white and the black candlesticks, but thank you for that question.
Oh, me, me, constantly.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so now, now, do you feel like you understand that better? Yeah, you can see what's going on here? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so look, let's look at this again. We started down here, well, we didn't, we actually, this whole candle, which was March twenty twenty, has come down and dropped all the way down to the bottom, yeah? And then it's gone up, 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 then down, then up, 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 up. Then we've got this one spike, then down, then we've got this big spike, then down. Okay, so this is what I want you to pay attention to. Okay, so we've got one spike, then we've got a longer spike, then a drop. Yeah? One spike, just a little wick, then a longer spike, this is two months, then a longer spike, okay? So we're looking at this on the monthly chart, where each candlestick represents one month. We're gonna go down the different timeframes and look at this weekly, daily, hour four, and maybe hour one, okay? So let's start off with weekly, where each candlestick represents one week. This is the same chart, GBP USD, this is the same chart, except each candlestick represents one week now. So let me zoom out, and you can see, okay, let's zoom out all the way. You can see, um, that price has started at the bottom, and it's done exactly the same thing, it's gone up, it's dropped down, it's come up, then you've got your one spike, then you've got your slightly longer spike. Okay, you can see the same pattern, but you should now be able to see it in more detail. Yeah, it's not just one candlestick like it was before. Now you can see more detail, because we're looking at the weekly timeframe. You can see more detail about the same thing. Is that clear to everyone? Can you see the more detail?
Yes.
Yeah? Is anyone, is anyone confused, or what am I looking at right now? Good, there should be no reason to be, do you know what I mean? So excellent, excellent. Okay, um, what about if we go to the daily timeframe? Where each candlestick is a day, well, look, you can see the same thing, but even more detail, yeah? That's where we came down. In this chart, every single candlestick represents one day. So day by day by day by day, these candlesticks are forming, okay? So this is the most recent day, even though we know for the month, for the month, we saw that the candlestick was white, didn't we? This monthly candlestick that's being formed is a white candlestick. However, on the daily chart, Friday's candlestick was black. So if we just break into that, the month started here, and this is where we currently are. Yeah, so we have gone up. This is a white candle, because this is where the month started, and this is where we're currently at. We should have a little wick on top, because as you can see, we have come up a tiny little bit. So we should have a little wick on top, and that's what the monthly candlestick should look like. Let's just look at it again. See it there? We started at the bottom, we've got a little wick on top, that's where we currently are. Is that, is that absolutely clear to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah? Excellent. Okay, um, let's go back to days. And you can see, using these timeframes, okay, you can see using these timeframes, that, um, yeah, that it's the same pattern as is on the larger timeframe. Let's have a look at hour four and break it down to the, to the small, now it's a bit too small to even see properly on the hour four, look. That's the, that's the second spike, and that's the first spike, then it's got all that drop. Do you know what I mean? All the way down there, that's the, the little punch. That's your first spike, that's your second spike. Now, in this instance, this is the hour four, where each candlestick represents four hours. You can see the detail, uh, uh, inside the detail, inside the detail of what's going on, on the first spike and the second spike that we saw on the monthly chart, okay? The more you look at these charts, the more you'll be able to, at a glance, just kind of bounce between different timeframes and see what you're looking at, and be like, okay, I've got that, I've got that, I've got that, I've got that, yeah? Just at a glance, you can see the different timeframes, and you can see, okay, look, this is the first spike, this is the second spike. And you can go out to the monthly view and say, this is the first spike, this is the second spike, yeah? And what doesn't look like much on the monthly view, and this is the point that I wanna make with regards to patience. What doesn't look like much on the monthly view, it's only two or three candles, and it looks so simple, right? But on the daily view, or on the hour four view even, we can see that it has taken weeks for this to happen. It's taken weeks for this to happen. Yeah, it's taken months even. Right, well, we know it's taken months, because obviously it took two months on the monthly candle. It took two months, and we know that. But now we can see how volatile price was during those two months. Okay, while those two candles are being formed, we can see how volatile price was, we can see what happened. You know, and on the monthly chart, all it shows us is, um, on the monthly chart, all it shows us is one, two, three, four weeks, uh, probably back, I'm gonna guess, I'm guessing here, one, two, three, four weeks. One, two, three, four weeks. That can't be right, I don't know. Oh, let's go back one. How about this? One, two, three, four weeks. One, two, three, four weeks, okay? So on the monthly chart, all we have is one black candle and one white candle, because we started down here, and we finished at the top. We started at the top and we finished at the bottom. Yeah? So we've got one white candle, and we've got one black candle. That's all the monthly chart is gonna show us. It's just gonna show us just that information, okay? Um, because it's kind of showing us the whole picture. Yeah, but all of that is expressed in one candlestick. But if we zoom in, then we can see, look, do you know what I mean? This is what actually happened, day by day by day by day by day. Every four hours, you can see, you know, what each four-hour candlestick looks like, right? And, and within that, you can also see, obviously, what each candlestick looked like. You can zoom in smaller, and you can zoom in smaller, and you can zoom in smaller, to the point where, you know, why am I even down here? What's going on, right? Um, so let's say you make a trading strategy based off of the monthly chart, okay? So let's say you're looking at the monthly chart, and we spoke about market structure last week, is that correct? Can you guys just jog my memory? It was market structure we spoke about, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Excellent, excellent, okay. So let's say you're looking at market structure, because some of you guys were here last week, but none of you guys are first timers, so I'm guessing the majority of you have got a rough idea of what market structure is. Let's say you're looking at market structure, and you see that, you know, we've hit this resistance level, and I think we're gonna go down to here, right? How long is that going to take? That could potentially take all year, two years to happen, yeah? So you might not wanna jump into a long-term trade like that if you don't have the, um, you know, if you don't have the, the, the finances to deal with the volatility, right? Because when we looked at the, um, when we looked at the hour four view, you can see that even though this looks like a, a simple, quick, easy trade, the closer you zoom in, the market is actually moving around a lot more pips than you would think. Yeah, the market's bouncing around up and down, up and down, between a lot of pips. The range is ridiculous. The market could spike at any moment, the market could drop at any moment, you know? So while you can see the bigger picture, and you've got a good idea of what's going to happen, right? There's just no guarantee when it's going to happen. Um, even if you know what's gonna happen, there's no guarantee when it's gonna happen, there's no guarantee how it's going to happen, okay? And this is where patience comes in. Because obviously, if you don't know when it's gonna happen, then you could jump in, throw your money in, and be like, I know it's gonna drop down, and then it comes up, and it sucks your money, and then it drops down, because you're over-leveraged, and you can't jump back in a second time. You know, because you put all your money on the first one, which is not the way to live, okay? You don't wanna do that. You wanna respect the market, you know what I mean? You wanna take time, you wanna not over-leverage, okay? You wanna put in like an amount that you can afford, and you wanna manage your risk. We'll do a, we'll do, we'll definitely do a session on risk management, maybe even next week, we'll do a session on risk management. Be, wanna manage your risk, that's really important, okay? Um, and you wanna enter the market, and then trust your strategy. If it goes wrong, then you don't necessarily need to change your strategy. Let's say I think that price is gonna go down, right, based on this monthly chart. I think price is gonna go down, right? But first, so I enter and I set my stop-loss here, for example, I don't know. First, market goes up again, and then comes down, right, like it did here, do you know what I mean? Like it did right here, yeah? It's done one spike, then it's done the two spikes, remember? Let's say it does it again for even longer. Who knows what's gonna happen? Nobody, nobody knows how it's gonna happen, nobody knows when it's gonna happen. But we can be quite confident that we've got an idea, what is going to happen. We can make an educated guess. I think ultimately, the market's gonna go down, okay? But I need to be patient, do you understand? I can't just be like, okay, boom, this is what I think is gonna happen. It should happen right now. That's not the way the market works. The market works when it's ready to work. The market works when it receives the, the input it needs. The market doesn't work when you enter your one pound per pip trade. That's not gonna do anything for the market. Yeah, the market's not gonna react to that and be like, oh, great, you know, um, Cassandra's entered the trade now, let's drop for her and give her all of her money. You know, as much as we love it, as much as we wish, yeah, that it would do that for us, that is not how the market works. The market is going to move at its own pace, okay? So it's for us to wait for the market, wait for it to come to you, enter the market at the best time. For example, let's say I think this market is gonna drop. Is it better for me to enter the market here, or is it better for me to enter the market up here? You know, I'm sure we would all agree that if I can, the closer I can enter to here, the better, right? So if I see that price is climbing upwards slowly, slowly, I'm gonna wait. I'm gonna be patient, I'm gonna wait for the market to reach this level. Because I know it doesn't normally break past this level. It might break past it. If it does, then my trade was wrong. But if I could enter right up here, I would be happy and put my stop-loss nice and safe. Do you know what I'm saying? But if I have to enter down here and put my stop-loss all the way up here, then that means that I've got a large risk. If I enter down here and I put my stop-loss here, then there's still risk of volatility, because you don't know what's gonna happen, okay? Anything can happen, right? It's okay to do, as long as you don't over-leverage, as long as you're confident it's gonna drop now, then you can enter and you can set your stop-loss quite close, do you know what I mean? But if you're wrong, you're wrong, it's fine, it happens, okay? Um, this what I'm showing you, oh, sorry, this what I'm showing you would probably look a bit, um, cleaner on, say, the hour four, so let's do that. Let's do that. So we've got the, there's your, there's your second spike, first spike, second spike, right? And this is where we currently are. So let's say, ah, sorry, my, um, phone holder's blocking my pen. There you go. So let's say, I'm, um, I enter here. Now I might wanna put my, my stop-loss here, or here, right? Instead of, on the monthly chart, do you remember, I put my stop-loss above the second spike? This is the second spike. So I'd have to put my stop-loss up here and enter the market down here, right? We're at one point, one point four two six eight oh, if I wanted to avoid that second spike on the monthly chart. But, you know, down here, it's a little bit closer, it's a bit tighter, yeah, it's not so far, do you know what I mean? I can enter the market, um, here, and I can put my stop-loss here. We haven't spoken about what a stop-loss is today, so if anyone's unsure about the stop-loss, then as I said, yeah, remind me next week, and we'll talk about risk management, okay? But I'm kind of doing like a little preliminary, we're not gonna talk about risk management today. Um, I'm just using this as an example, but make sure you come back next week, yeah? And we'll talk about risk management, um, and pips. I'll, I will make sure to remember that.
Nate?
Yes?
I think next week, we have, um, we have the convention, B-convention.
Oh, really? Oh, is that next week? Oh, okay.
Do you think next week? The eighteenth and nineteenth?
Okay.
Which is Saturday on Sunday.
Yeah, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I'm not too sure what the time is.
I will check in with, yeah, I'll check in with, um, with the guys then. Thank you for letting me know that, says, thank you for that. I'll check in with the guys. And we'll, um, if it's a convention, it's a convention, do you know what I mean? We won't compete, we'll, we'll either, um, juggle the time for the Sunday study session, maybe, or we just sort of push it back and do it the following week. Obviously, if you've got a convention, if it's like an all-day or something like that, then we'll just let that run. Um, and we'll come back the following week, because it's only a one-off, isn't it, this convention? So, yeah, thank you for that, thanks for, thanks for noting that. Um, but the next time we do a Sunday study session, I'll be sure to do, you know, pips and risk management. That was that, one of the first ones that I've done, so. Um, if you can't wait a week, then go back and look at the videos, that I'm sure, just, I think I've seen Justin post a link in the chat. We do have a couple of videos on the subject already. So all of these Sunday study sessions that I've done today, for example, Justin's been recording them and posting them on YouTube, do you know what I'm saying? So you can go back and you can watch them, you can go back and you can check them, you can go and see them. Um, I think it, I don't know if it's a private YouTube channel just for us or what, but you can go back and you can see them, do you know what I mean? They're all there. Um, so, you know, help yourself. There's definitely a pips and risk management, um, section. You know, we've done more than one session on that subject already, but the next session we do will discuss the stop-loss. But today, the focus is on patience, okay? So that's, that's kind of what I really wanted to zero in on, um, that the market can take years to get from A to B, right? Um, which brings me to my second point, I'm running a little bit behind time, but I still wanna make this point, okay? Is patience in your journey? Because obviously, while you might not enter a trade that's gonna take years, you might decide, like me, you might decide to trade the hour chart or the hour four chart, and instead of trading the whole month, you might just wanna catch, say, twenty pips a day, yeah? Excuse me, you might just wanna catch a cheeky twenty pips a day, twenty-five pips a day, fifty pips every couple of days, you know, maybe like a hundred pips a week. That's your target, that's what you're going for. You're not trying to catch this one thousand pip move, you're trying to catch loads of small moves. Yeah, like the rest of us. Instead of catching this one big move, you're trying to catch loads of small moves. In which case, you can catch a hundred, a thousand pips, or four, was it three thousand pips? You can catch three thousand pips a lot quicker, because obviously you're catching it on the way down and on the way up. While the market is going up, down, up, down, up, down, up, down, you're catching pips on the way down and on the way up. Because you're not waiting all year for the market to go from A to B. Yeah, you're catching, you're catching trades, A, B, A, B, C, D, E, F, you're catching all the trades, right? If you're doing that like me, and you're taking smaller trades, you still need to be patient. You need to be patient in your journey, okay? Because as I mentioned at the very beginning of this Sunday study session, um, trading is not something that you can just step into and automatically be an expert at. It's not something you can step into and automatically be a professional at, okay? Trading is something that, um, that, you know, they teach, they teach courses on, you know, as we have courses on, wow. They're professionals, they're multi-millionaires that are teaching people how to do this. This is not something that, you know, um, Joe Blogs can just walk in and be like, right, now I know. For our youngest listener, I would say that, you know, the way young people absorb information, um, you guys are in a really good position, because obviously you have the ability to absorb this information a lot quicker than some of the, um, older people who are hearing this for the first time, and they're like, okay, but, and you have to think about it. Younger people, you should be able to soak it up, do you know what I mean? And you'll be able to learn quickly, right? Um, however- Um, however, we can all learn quickly, it's very simple, it's very simple, but whether you are young or whether you are slightly older. It is important that you know that despite the fact that trading is simple, it is not easy, okay? So it's something that you really need to be patient with, it could take you maybe like five months. Before you get your trading to a point where you understand it and you're not losing money. Yeah, it could take you five months of your time, of your life, how long did it take you to, let's say you work a job. And you're earning, say like um, and you're earning say like two thousand pounds a month, yeah, and you're what, thirty five, right? It took you thirty five years of your life to earn a job where you're taking home two thousand pounds a month. Thirty five years of your life and that is where you're at, okay, there's nothing wrong with that, but you know, that's taking you thirty five years to get to that point. So you think it will take you what, a month to get to the point where you're taking home two thousand pounds a day from the market, that's just not gonna happen. Do you know what I'm saying? It's going to take you time, it's gonna take you study, it's like um, it's like going to the gym, guys, okay? So if you go to the gym and you wanna get a six pack like me, I don't have a six pack, okay? But if you wanna get a six pack, like I wanna get a six pack, right? Then, you know, it's not something that's gonna happen after going to the gym and doing one sit up, you know? Like, it's something that's gonna happen with consistency, it's something that's gonna happen with discipline, it's something that's going to happen with patience, okay? So you really need to be patient with yourself, you're gonna lose money before you earn money, okay? But it's really important that you respect and appreciate the potential that this market has. Once you develop this skill, this skill is something that you can take with you anywhere in the world. You can move to Italy and the price chart for GBP USD is going to be the same. You can move to Kenya and the price chart for GBP USD is going to be the same, yeah? Anywhere in the world that you live, you have a skill where you can make money from your phone, okay? Um, and not just any money, big money, do you know what I'm saying? If you recognize the potential that investment has, which I'm sure you will do because we're all here, yeah? You know that, as I said, we make money on a price per pip basis. So if you enter the market at one pound a pip and you catch twenty pips, then your one pound is turned into twenty pounds. If you enter the market at ten pounds a pip and you catch twenty pips, then your ten pound will turn into two hundred pounds. Your ten pound will turn into two hundred pounds, okay? But that's not something that catching twenty pips is easier said than done, it's doable, it's very doable, but it's very, it's a lot easier to say. Let me tell you that now, right, it's a lot easier to say. Um, a lot of us in this chatroom are at a level that, say, the average, if you look out your window. The person that's walking past your house right now, they're not at the same level as you, okay? You already know, for example, the things we've spoken about today, you know more than perhaps you're even giving yourself credit for. Yeah, you know what a candlestick is, you know what a pip is, you know that trading exists, not everyone knows that. Before I came here, before Justin put me on, I didn't know this was a thing, I had no idea what this was. I actually had like two, three hundred pound in Bitcoin in like two thousand seventeen and I pulled it out because I needed money, I did not know. I didn't know, yeah, I had no idea what was going on with this financial industry, with these candlesticks, with these charts, I didn't know, right? Now I know, so now I am leveraging that information, now I'm taking advantage of it, now I'm using it to my benefit, do you know what I mean? But at the time I didn't know, yeah, people walking outside down the street, they're seeing Bitcoin on buses. They're seeing, you know, people are doing network marketing calls, they're sending the messages, they have no idea the potential that this market offers. So I really want you guys to, to dwell on the potential that this market offers and I want you to be patient, yeah? Don't expect it to happen immediately, know what this market is capable of, know what you are capable of in this market, okay? And um, and take time to get it, one more thing I wanna say about this, this is my normal sales pitch when I speak to people about Forex, yeah? Is that um, when you, let me do the eye contact thing as well, because I'm finished with the chart, is that um, you know, when you finish, when you um. When you look at a banker, for example, say like a hundred years ago, when you think of a banker, you're probably gonna think of someone with. Like, I don't know, like a big belly and a cigar hanging out of his mouth, you know, dungarees, red dungarees. Uh, maybe like a gray suit, old white man with gray hair, yeah, that's what you think of when you think of a banker, okay? However, now in twenty twenty one, I'm telling you guys, um, we are the first generation to have smartphones. Yeah, when we grew up, there were no smartphones, right, that wasn't a thing, that's not something that our parents had. Our parents didn't have this, okay, so we have in our hands new technology that we can take advantage of. Now, it doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter where you are in the world, it doesn't matter if you're a, a woman, it doesn't matter if you're a man. It doesn't matter how you identify, it doesn't matter what your sexuality is, it doesn't matter what country you're from. You can jump on the market and you can trade, you can invest off your phone, yeah? Everybody has the ability or has the, the platform to do this now, yeah? Everyone has the ability to do it and that's what makes this so powerful. Because now that obviously this platform has been opened up to all of us, the only thing that is missing is your genius. Look at the black women in here today, you know, you guys would not have been allowed anywhere near this industry a few thousand years ago. Because you're women, because you're black people, yeah, you wouldn't have been allowed anywhere near this industry, there are gatekeepers, you would have phoned up, they would have said, what? You know, olamide, no thank you, do you know what I mean? And they would have cut the phone, they don't wanna take your money, they don't wanna work with you, right? The only thing that is missing from this industry is your genius, yeah? Now you, your ability, your ability to pull this off, which you have, you are intelligent enough to do it. But there's just never been a you in this situation before, yeah, there's never been a you in this space before. So you need to apply your genius to this space, take your time, be patient, don't jump in and expect it to happen now. Know that with consistency, with patience, with discipline, like going to the gym, yeah? With consistency, with patience, with discipline, you will be successful, because it's very simple to do, is that a hand?
Nate, yeah, 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 Nate, I need to ask, um shift holdout G B P A U D is a sale. I think um probably seven days ago, it's a sale, but it seems to have gone the opposite. So I ended up actually having to close it, because what it meant was I had so much money locked up in the reverse position. Um, is it any chance we could look at that, that one, or by close digs, I just thought that you.
Do you know what I would say for that? I hear you, I, okay, so what I was, what I would say for that is that the purpose of these Sunday study sessions. Is ultimately so that you guys can read the charts and kind of call your own trades, right? The guys on shift are professional traders, however, as I said. That doesn't mean that they know what the market is gonna do, they can be wrong sometimes as well, in fact, they are wrong quite often, yeah? Um, however, they're correct more often than they're wrong, yeah, they've got, as we can see, they've got a very good success rate. However, it doesn't, look how many trades they post, they post loads of trades in the course of a day. Okay, so there are loads of trades that, you know, unfortunately go the wrong way or hit stop loss, it definitely is going to happen. There is no one on planet Earth that can be right one hundred percent of the time. So what I would recommend for you, Shingy, is that when you place a trade. That you, we're gonna, as I said, next week we'll do, or the, or the week after, if it needs to be, we'll do risk management. But I would strongly recommend when you enter a trade, you manage your risk, so let's say you've got a hundred pounds in your account. When you enter a trade, you don't wanna enter a trade and risk that what whole one hundred pounds on one trade. Because if it's wrong, then you're gonna lose your whole account, yeah? If you've got a thousand pounds in your account, you don't wanna risk the whole one thousand pounds on that one trade. Even if you've got millions and millions in your bank, yeah, if you've got a thousand pounds in your trading account. You don't wanna risk that whole thousand pounds on this one trade, you know, you wanna take time with it and learn, okay? You're gonna win some, you're gonna lose some, but um, this is another part where patience comes in, because if a shift trader calls a trade. And the trade goes the wrong way at first, it can still turn around and come back and go the right way, do you know what I'm saying? It can still turn around and go back and come the right way. If you have over leveraged, as in, yeah, if you, if you invested more money than you can afford to. Then it's going to feel like your money is locked in, it's gonna feel like, oh, no, I'm trapped, yeah, because the, the market's gone the wrong way. But you're not trapped, so if, okay, let's think about it like this, yeah, let's say, this is where they say to enter. And this is the stop loss and the take profits down there, yeah, if the market goes up first. If you have entered at ten pounds a pip, you're gonna be losing five hundred pounds. Whereas if you had entered at one pound a pip, then you're gonna be losing uh, what, fifty pounds? If you had entered at ten pence per pip, you're gonna be losing five pounds, right? Yeah, so if you're losing five pounds, you're thinking, okay, it's not that deep, I can be patient and I can wait to see if it hits stop loss. Or if it turns around and comes back, I can trust this trade, because I'm only losing five pounds worst case scenario. But if you enter at ten pounds a pip and you're losing five hundred pounds, you're gonna be sweating, yeah, you're gonna be like, man, no, this trade has gone wrong. What's going on? It's going the wrong way, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Loads of trades are gonna go the wrong way, yeah, what's important is that you, you manage your risk and you don't over leverage, that's what's important, that you. Enter a trade with an amount that you can afford to lose, so that if it goes wrong, it's fine. You know, you live to fight another day, and if it goes right, then you're gonna make money, you might not make as much money as you would have made. If you would enter that ten pounds a pip, that would have been great, do you know what I'm saying? If you would hit this trade, you would have earned thousands, you know what I'm saying, it would have been brilliant. But if you just enter at ten pence per pip, then, you know, all you're gonna do is you're maybe gonna win three pounds sixty. Or you might win twenty quid, do you know what I mean? Like, you might win a bit or here or there, but it's not gonna be the same as that. You would have earned thousands if you entered that uh, uh, over leveraged, yeah? So really, that's where your leverage comes in, when you get a shift trade come through. You need to manage your risk, do you know what I mean, and decide, okay, what am I willing to risk? If you feel like you're locked in, then it's probably because you've put in a little bit more than you should have, do you know what I mean? And even then, that's why you're gonna jump out the trade early, instead of just being patient and waiting for the trade to finish. If it hits stop loss, so be it, if it turns around, excellent, but that is where the patience comes in, yeah? Because the, the stop loss is normally put at a strong support or resistance level, so the stop loss is there to kind of. It should turn around before it hits the stop loss, because the stop loss is a strong level, do you know what I mean? So it should turn around before it hits the stop loss, but if you, if you find that you can't wait for that, you're sweating. Then it's probably because you might have put a bit more on, on that individual trade than was, than you have in your account, than you're willing to lose. You're not willing to lose thirty pounds on one trade, do you know what I mean? You'd prefer to lose maybe ten pounds, five pounds, but if you're losing thirty, forty, eighty pounds, then you're sweating, do you know what I mean? So now I'm losing eighty pounds on this trade and I didn't want that, yeah, that's because you're trading with Nathan size lot sizes. Do you know what I mean? Or Augustine size lot sizes, um, and we don't need to do that, especially if we're here on the Sunday study sessions. We can start small, do you know what I mean, thirty p a pip, ten p a pip, fifty p a pip, sixty p top top. You know, just jumping with small, small lot sizes, manage risk, okay, fair enough, if this trade goes wrong, I might lose a whole ten pounds. If this trade goes wrong, you know, I might lose uh fifteen pounds, that's gonna burn, do you know what I mean? But at the same time, if it hits, I'm good, you know, I'm laughing, you know, um. But if you find that you're losing like eighty pounds, ninety pounds, and you've only got a few hundred pounds in your trading account, then you are over leveraging.
No.
Um, Nate.
Mm-hmm, who is that?
Next, Judith, next week, Sunday, or Sunday coming.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the um, the convention starts at twelve thirty P M.
Ah, does it?
Yeah, and on Saturday starts at one thirty P M.
Okay, so Sunday it starts at twelve thirty.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we'll do an earlier session on Sunday then, let me just see, let me just see where I've gone for my Sunday, hold on. Um, yeah, oh, okay. Hmm, maybe we'll do an earlier session, I'm going to um, I'm going to, my friend's doing a charity boxing match on Saturday. So, but I should be, I should be back early, I try not to start these Sunday study sessions early, because I'm not an early, early person like that, you know? But at the same time, I wanna be realistic with myself, do you know what I mean? I know me, I'm, I'm a creative, so I'll stay up till four in the morning every day happily, but when it comes to waking up at seven, that's for, that's for Carl. Do you know, that's for you, man, you lot are all over that and I respect it, do you know? That's for, there you go, Albert, come on, early man.
Big man, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cool, um, just um adding a little bit to the question, the answers you gave, um, it's really clear. I read something that says a pro trader is obsessed with the risk management. All they do, all they think of is risk management, I remember GBP JPY. The whole week it was in negative, we had a shift um call on it, it was um a buy, I knew it was going to buy, but. When I entered, it just had a massive pullback and I was in negative, total red. But what saved me was my risk management, what saved me was my risk management, I was using only six pound. And guess what, on Friday, it just turned backwards to minder and I won't bring. You see, it's just your risk management, I always say this, risk management is what.
It's so important, you know, it's so important, it's crucial.
If you, we are amateurs, we, we are just following the money, just chasing the money, but the whole thing is chase the pips. Concentrate on the risk management, proper risk management will help you through, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, come on, thank you, King, appreciate you, okay? So I wanna respect you guys' time, I wanna respect your time, obviously, we've gone twenty minutes over where we're supposed to finish. Um, so I wanna ask, I, you know, obviously I know some of you guys are gonna have to go. Um, does anyone else have any questions? Does anyone else have anything that you guys wanna ask before we go?
Yeah, maybe, the risk, risk management now that I would really love to, you know, um, go for.
Yeah, I would recommend, before anything, okay, go onto the um YouTube playlist that Justin has sent you. Go onto YouTube and find the video on risk management, because you might not wanna wait a whole week for us to have this conversation, okay? We're gonna speak about it next week anyway, or the week, or maybe next week, probably next week, if it's at twelve thirty. Um, then we'll probably do like a, I don't know, maybe we'll do like a eleven thirty or eleven o'clock, do you know what I mean? So that we can just do eleven o'clock, we'll do an hour on risk management and then we can jump into the convention, yeah? So I feel like that could work, I feel like that could work, I'll sort out the flyer, I'll sort everything else out. I just wanna make sure that I can commit to it once I say I'm gonna do it, because I know my weekends, I'm normally out at poetry events. So I'm out at places, do you know what I'm saying? So I normally lay in, which is why I set the thing for one o'clock, like I said, I just woke up. I had my breakfast now, do you know what I mean? Um, so I feel like next week we can do eleven o'clock maybe, do you know what I mean? Stick with the, the one theme, all the ones, um, so I feel like we can do that next week and then we'll talk about risk management. Um, so please make sure you're there, it'll be good to see you again, Sister Constance, yeah? But i- in the meantime, I would recommend before this week begins, before you place any trades this week. Before you place any trades this week, go on YouTube and watch the previous video on risk management. And then when I see you next week, I want you to teach us risk management, yeah, I want you to come and tell us something that you've learned in this week, okay?
Okay.
I love you.
Thing of um risk management in a deep, deep lesson, which will help you to determine the lot size. The stop loss, what you are risking to lose, all of them is in the recording, so you just take the time, go step by step. Soft, like it's, it's mass though, but obviously, there is. That I used to say, if something is about money, no matter what, you understand it. If you sit down, just calculate it slow by slow, just take it in your own pace, yeah? Understand it, then take it into the market and trust me, you'll be successful, that's what I'll say.
Thank you. Nate.
Uh-huh, yes.
Your phone Samsung.
Is my.
Phones that you use, it is Samsung.
Samsung, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thought so.
Yeah, why so?
Think when you go into the, the um, the, your chart, it shows it differently from Apple. Shows it more clear.
Yeah, yeah, the circle, the timeframe is in the circle form and.
Is it there, yeah, 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 come on, but work Samsung gang, I have got a, um. I have got an Apple as well, but I don't use it for trades, you know? Yeah, nice one, okay.
Yeah.
Um, how about our youngest member of the audience, are you still here? Was that um, was that Sandra?
Um, Sandra, yeah.
Yeah? How are you, how you, how did you guys find it? Sandra, you still here?
I don't think she is. I think she is.
Nah, okay. I thought we did a litmus test, you know, find out if our youngest member of the audience stayed with us throughout bar. It seems like he's X star.
Hmm.
Which happens, do you know what I'm saying? Which is fair. I'm gonna just say I think we've done a good job. I reckon you got most of it, do you know what I mean? Um, how about you guys? Did you guys find value in this week's Sunday study session?
Yeah, a lot.
Yeah? I want you guys to take from this, man. And I don't want it to come across like I'm trying to tell you, you know, oh, just stay here, just be patient. I am saying you should feel this yourself, yeah? I want you to look at the market and respect. The market is gonna take months to do what it's gonna do, you know? And in in addition to that, you are gonna take months to change your habits, to change your lifestyle, to change your um, the way you think about things, the way you perceive money, yeah? It's not something that you're gonna be able to change in the blink of an eye. It's something that's gonna take you months to develop, okay? And the best way for you to take, the best way for you to develop yourself is to be consistent with your study, okay? That's the best way for you to develop yourself. Like at the gym, the best way for you to go from the person that you are today to the person that is making millions in this market. The best way for you to go from A to B is to be consistent with your exercise, to be consistent with your study, to be consistent with your diet. Do you know what I mean? To be consistent, to be patient. It's not something that will happen after one apple. Boom. Now look at your supermodel. Do you know what I'm saying? It's something that you're gonna have to take time. You're gonna have to be disciplined. You're gonna have to be patient. And if you want to be in this space and you want to be successful in this space, if you appreciate the potential, then it's not me that's telling you be patient. I'm telling you that, you know, we, I have to be patient, yeah? We all have to take time to pull this off. It's not something that will happen overnight. Me, I'm here teaching and I'm still, I don't have, you know, thousands and thousands in my account, not by a long shot, you know? So it will take time. Even if you know what to do, it will still take time to do it, yeah? So just take time and be consistent. Come to as many Sunday study sessions as you can. Um, study as many videos on wow as you can and be prepared to be here for a couple of years, do you know what I mean? And then once you're here for a couple of years and you've got it patterned and you know, boom, that's it, do you know what I mean? Then you will start to see, okay, look, I'm, I've been consistent and look, I'm making money, I'm making money. And then before you know it, I'm making more money. Before you know it, wow, I am now cleaning the profit. I'm deep in the green. Do you know what I'm saying? But that will only come with time. It's not likely to happen immediate. It's possible, like I said, you might get lucky, over leveraged on your first trade and you're laughing. But it's not something that I would bank on, do you know what I mean? I wouldn't make a strategy out of it. I wouldn't be like, right, this is how I'm gonna win. Because it's not how a lot of, it's how a lot of people lose, you know, your money. And even if you do win um just by chance using that strategy, the next time you try to use it, you will lose all of your winnings, yeah? So you definitely wanna be patient um and and compound your interest. But guys, that's all I have for today. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go and burn a zoot and, you know, I've got some phone calls to make. I'm gonna watch some anime. I'm gonna go and live my life. I'm gonna probably go.
One more question, Mike.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What timeframe do you trade on?
Um, hour four for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I like to use all of them, but I feel like um, I start off with the month and I'm like, okay, I see what the month is. And this is what's going on for the month. I've got a, the monthly chart gives me a directional bias, yeah? And then um, the daily chart or the weekly chart will re, will confirm that daily bias. And then after that, I like to look at the hour four because the hour four is like the candle makes big moves. So I can catch like a hundred pips if I, if I'm good at it. I can catch like a good hundred pips, you know what I mean? It makes good moves as opposed to the fifteen minute chart, which does like maybe, you know, short moves, short moves, yeah? The hour four, big moves, yeah? Um, so I like to kind of watch that. I might use the fifteen minute chart to sniper my entry, you know, so that I can enter at the best time possible. But overall, my trade is smack bang in the middle. It's just the hour four. It's that, okay, I've got like an idea. This is what I'm going for. Um, yeah, basically.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You helped me a lot today.
Say again, Baba, say again.
You helped me a lot today. You clarified so many things for me because I'm a new system. So I'm just, for me now, I'm taking my time.
Today your first one? Uh-huh. This is your first, your first session, yeah?
Uh, no, not really. I'm a very good friends of Augustine and Nathan. And um, uh, obviously I know them from years and then I just came in today. This wonderful platform organization, so you know, I'm learning and I'm trying my best. For me especially, it's more like I'm building my confidence. Because like none of my people really trust, like they didn't trust me about the opportunity to offer like what I saw in this, in this opportunity. So for me, it's my, it's my of like getting the knowledge, understanding, practice and then after like.
Come on, bro. You could definitely do it, man. You can definitely do it. Anyone can do it. It's you. Do you know what I'm saying? Because anyone can do it and you definitely can do it, yeah? So it just like I said, like it takes, you know, it's gonna take consistency, it's gonna take discipline. But it's not a platform that you and I would have had access to a few hundred years ago. You know, they're not ready for us, bro. They don't know. You get me? They don't know. They're not ready for us, man. They don't understand. They don't know our creativity. They don't know our, do you know what I mean? The way that we think is different. The market is not ready for us, do you know what I mean? So all you gotta do is just be you and apply your energy into this market and be patient and you'll definitely get results, man. Honestly, yeah, come on.
Appreciate it.
Love, love, love. All right, guys. That was it. Was there anybody lost?
Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome. You're welcome, Sister Constance.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Sister Judith. Good to have you back as well.
I'm a big fan of anime. What anime you watching?
All of them. Listen, I could talk about anime by time.
Not today, brother. Come on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Interesting. Um, obviously Tokyo Revengers. I'm up to speed on Tokyo Revengers is looking good. Um, yeah, there's loads of them, man. I think that's today's motive, actually. I'm gonna check out. I think I missed the last Tokyo Revengers, so I'm gonna just catch up on that one. Because I'm watching about like five or six. It's like, okay, whatever's, normally they renew on the weekend, isn't it? So I'll catch that. I'll make some food because that's not breakfast. I'm gonna go and make some proper breakfast now. And do you know what I mean? I watched like five or six of them. And then I'm gonna plan out my trades for the week, do you know what I mean? Because that's also important. So definitely, Sunday is the best day to do that, by the way. Obviously, guys, the market's closed on the weekend, yeah? The market is going to open tomorrow, right? The market's going to open tomorrow. So it's good when the market, when nothing is happening. Now is a good time for you to look at the chart, for you to plan out what you think is gonna happen. And even if you don't take a single trade on your chart, right? Just follow the shift trades, but you can watch your chart. So let's say you pick Euro USD and you're looking at it and you say, okay, this is what I think is gonna happen this week. Then next week, look at the chart and be like, did the weekly candle do what I think it was gonna do? And do it every week. Take time. In three, four weeks' time of looking at that same chart, yeah? In three, four weeks' time of looking, it will start to become very predictable for you. Do you know what I mean? If you just pick one chart and marry it, yeah, and just stick with that one. You can take shift trades if you want, but this one is yours and you're gonna study it. You're gonna learn about the country. Let's say it's um JPY. You're gonna study Japan. You're gonna learn the economy. Do you know what I mean? You're gonna focus on that one. Or me, like I like to do GBP USD or Euro USD. Those are my two that I've been kind of studying, you know? Pick one and stick with it. And then after say three weeks, four weeks, it will become more predictable. You'll be like, okay, yeah, so it should do this and it does it. Okay, it should do that and it does it. Do you know what? Let me put in a little trade and it does it, yeah? And you're just gonna be getting better and better and better and better and better and better. Yeah, so you know, that's what I would say. Look at a chart this Sunday and then look at the same chart again next Sunday, okay? And do that every Sunday. That's why I think the Sunday study sessions are good because today is a good day to study, yeah? Guys, you with me?
Absolutely.
Brilliant. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna go and get with my day. I enjoy you all. Yeah, thank you, guys. All right, love, 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 love.